Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Vision for Louise Dean Center at Jack James High School. Before we get started, I'd just like to acknowledge the land. Our elders have shared that it is important to acknowledge the land where we gather and the first peoples who traditionally lived here. It shows respect for people, their contributions, and their ways of knowing, which are reflected through the stories and songs that have lived on this land for thousands of years. We are making this acknowledgement at the beginning of our gathering today to further demonstrate our commitment to work together as a community in laying the foundation for reconciliation through education. We would like to acknowledge the traditional territories and oral practices of the Blackfoot Nations, which include the Sichigat, the Begani, and the Gai'na. We also acknowledge the Sutana and Stony Nakota First Nations, the Meti Nation, Region 3, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty VII region of Southern Alberta. Some introductions today, just before we get started. So I would like to welcome Dana Downey, trustee, Words 1 and 2, Patricia Bolger, trustee, Words 6 and 7, Nancy Close, trustee, Words 11 and 13, Charlene May, trustee, Words 12 and 14, Andrea Haloka, superintendent of school improvement, Joanne Pittman, superintendent of school improvement, Dani Breton, superintendent, Facilities and Environmental Services, Byron Chan, co-chief executive officer of Kindred, Jessica Coke-Williams, co-chief executive officer of Kindred, Mike Wilson, education director, Area 3. I'm Lisa Noctigal, acting education director of Area 4. And we also welcome Helen Colborne, principal of Louise Dean, Jen Gorkov, principal of Jack James, Connor McGreesh, acting manager of planning, and Karen Drummond, manager of community engagement. Our agenda today is going to include some opening remarks, some information about Louise Dean Center programming, reimagining the Louise Dean Center, our current situation, our recommendation, student learning opportunities, enrollment projections, communications, decision-making process, and then there will be a time for a question and answer period. If you have any questions as we go through this content, please jot them down. We'll ask you to hold your questions until we've covered the presentation content. We will open up the chat window closer to the Q and A time. At that point, you can type in any questions or comments you have. Members of the team will provide written or verbal responses to your questions. I will now like to turn it over to Andrea Haloka, superintendent of school improvement, for some opening remarks.
Thank you, Lisa. It's my pleasure to provide some opening remarks. What I'm going to share with you is that the Calgary Board of Education is committed to providing programming tailored to the needs of all students facing a variety of life situations, including pregnant and parenting teens. At the heart of student programming is the ability to allow students to successfully complete high school through a flexible approach that honors individual strengths and removes barriers to learning. As a demonstration of that commitment, we have been exploring ways to continue offering Louise Dean Center programming in collaboration with our partners, Kindred, formerly known as Catholic Family Service, and Alberta Health Services, and working with them in new ways that will allow for the continuation of the core of supports, services, and educational opportunities for Louise Dean students. What we will be sharing today is this new vision for Louise Dean and the benefits it can offer students will also demonstrating our commitment to the core programmatic elements. We will be sharing also how this will be hosted within a new site and why that poses strong potential for achieving this balance of new opportunity and a continuation of supports. We recognize that this recommendation we are here to discuss this evening is one that needs to be approached thoughtfully and with care. And we believe it's important to do all we can to provide as smooth a transition as possible for those who are affected. That is why we are taking time to share information, answer questions, and hear perspectives this spring. So with that in mind, I will now hand things back to Lisa to share more with us about Louise Dean Center of Programming.
Thank you, Andrea. So the Louise Dean Center at Kensington School provides a specialized grade 9 to 12 program for pregnant and parenting teens. It operates in partnership with Kindred and Alberta Health Services to provide comprehensive wraparound supports to help students complete high school. Reimagining a new vision for... Sorry. Backing up there a little bit. I'm so glad so many people are here as we share important messages about Louise Dean Center. It is important to be together for this discussion. I am so proud and honored of what Louise Dean Center provides for students on a daily basis. The personalized and individual attention each student receives in this building is paramount to their success. Recognized are the important elements that make this program work. They include, but are not limited to, the partnerships alongside Kindred and Alberta Health Services that provide so many opportunities such as social emotional support, success coaches, cultural diversity advisor, parent coaches, counseling, financial support worker, co-parenting courses, prenatal support, and the STEP program, to name a few. Flexible programming, responsive instructional practices to the specific needs of each student, and onsite childcare are other things that make this program work. Louise Dean Center has been a successful program because of these elements that have persevered over time. However, there have been changes affecting the program, which is important as we consider the future of Louise Dean and the vision of the program that should carry and the vision that the program should carry to meet the needs of the changing society and the students and clients that are served. To that end, we are embarking on a new vision for Louise Dean Center. This involves recognizing the core elements of the program that make it the success that it needs to be while also ensuring that it changes to meet the needs of students now and into the future. Reimagining a new vision for Louise Dean Center with continued access to Kindred and Alberta Health Services is crucial within this change. Flexible, individualized, and personalized programming will be maintained. Parenting fathers and partners are primarily absent from the program at Louise Dean. This creates difficulties supporting co-parenting and partnering through the prenatal and child-rearing process that is centered at the school. This will be an option in the new vision. We acknowledge the importance of sheltered programming, and it will continue. However, additional academic programming can be offered when the program is relocated to a new setting, and access to mental health and health-based supports will be available to a greater number of students. The facilitation of these changes requires a change of location to a bigger school. The building housing Louise Dean is in disrepair. However, the drive for change also exists in the need to reconsider how services are provided to the students and the whole system. This includes the need to relocate into a larger facility that is able to accommodate various components contained within this new vision. The Louise Dean Center at Kensington School provides a specialized grade 9 to 12 program for pregnant and parenting teens. It operates in partnerships with Kindred and Alberta Health Services to provide comprehensive wraparound supports to help students complete high school. The current Louise Dean Center site is limiting for partnering agencies, including Kindred and Alberta Health Services, who partner with the Louise Dean Center. Kensington School is a site that requires significant repair far beyond the cost of upgrades to other Calgary Board of Education sites. There is low student population at the current site, which impacts the richness and variety of program offerings available to students. CBE administration will be submitting a report to the Board of Trustees in September 2022 that recommends moving the Louise Dean Center to Jack James High School. If the decision to relocate the Louise Dean Center to Jack James High School is made, current Louise Dean Center programming and core courses will continue at Jack James High School. The new location was chosen considering student access to enhanced learning and support opportunities, available space at Calgary Board of Education high schools, financial sustainability, and access to transportation. Jack James High School is in close proximity to students currently attending Louise Dean Center. If relocation is supported, the Louise Dean Center will move to Jack James High School for the 2023-2024 school year and beyond. We have shared this recommendation with our program service partners, Kindred and Alberta Health Services. I would now like to turn it over to the education director of Area 3, Mike Wilson.
Thanks, Lisa. While considering this proposed relocation, it is important to note these essential components of the Louise Dean Center experience will remain intact. These include: the specialized and unique programming available to pregnant and parenting students at Louise Dean Center will continue at Jack James High School. This includes highly personalized learning opportunities for students giving their specific life experiences. Students at Louise Dean Center will continue to access programming and supports from our partners at Kindred and Alberta Health Services. Space for both partners, Kindred and Alberta Health Services, would need maintained and in some cases enhanced in a newer facility. Jack James High School students will now receive expanded access to Louise Dean Center partners to support their learning. This increase in partnership support will have significant and positive benefits for Jack James High School students. While considering this proposed relocation, it is important to note these essential components of the Louise Dean Center experience will remain. These include: the specialized and unique programming available to pregnant and parenting students at LDC will continue at Jack James High School. This includes highly personalized learning opportunities for students, given their specific life circumstances. Pardon me, I missed a slide. The new vision... Oh, sorry, back. There we go. The new vision for Louise Dean Center will provide additional learning opportunities for Louise Dean Center students while maintaining the components essential to the program. These future advantages and opportunities include: increased co-parenting opportunities for Louise Dean Center students. The current model does not allow for this. Expanded opportunity to offer diploma and knowledge and employability courses for both Louise Dean Center and Jack James High School students. Flexible schedules will continue to be honored for both Jack James High School and Louise Dean Center students. This is a key strength that both school staffs would bring to the proposed relocation. Jack James High School and Louise Dean students will continue to have access to courses and programs based on specific student needs. The following opportunities are important considerations in proposing this relocation. These critical components include: sheltered learning will continue for LDC students. That's really important, and I'm going to repeat that. Sheltered learning will continue for Louise Dean Center students. By sheltered, we mean highly personalized learning opportunities similar to their current learning experience. Students will have access to shared spaces for learning. This means that Jack James High School students and Louise Dean Center students will have the opportunity to share instructional space once relocation happens where appropriate. However, dedicated classroom spaces will also be provided for Louise Dean Center students who require programming based on entering and exiting learning at different times due to giving birth, chest breastfeeding, and attending to infant and toddler needs. As part of this new vision, LDC students will now have increased access to Indigenous and English language learner supports. Additional opportunities for both LDC and Jack James High School students include, as previously mentioned, staff at Jack James High School and Louise Dean Center are highly adept at creating individualized learning opportunities and plans, which allow for students to have multiple entry and exit points to continue their academic studies when life circumstances arrive. Opportunities such as extended semesters, credit recovery, retro credit, flexible programming, as well as other high school success strategies, will continue to promote successful high school completion for both Louise Dean Center and Jack James High School students. Increased programming prospects for Louise Dean Center and Jack James students, drawing on the collective staff expertise, ability to potentially utilize co-parenting support, all while providing safe, secure, and private sessions when necessary for Louise Dean Center students. Increased access to a wide variety of CTS courses for LDC students in the newly renovated Jack James High School shops. Increased access to -1 and -2 courses will also become available for Jack James High School students where appropriate, and increased access to counseling services for Jack James High School students. I would now like to turn it back over to Lisa.
Thank you, Mike. If relocation is supported, the following changes may be required. Staffing decisions will be made annually in alignment with budget considerations. Any changes to staffing for Louise Dean Center would be considered only after a decision to relocate the Louise Dean Center is made. Louise Dean Center and Jack James High School staff will work together to ensure smooth transition and ensure programming needs are met for all students. Redevelopment of some existing instructional space would be needed to increase the number of instructional spaces as well as provide space for the external partnerships supporting Louise Dean Center. This program is of the utmost importance to the Calgary Board of Education. We know that this new vision for Louise Dean may pose questions for staff at both sites and for community people such as yourselves attending this evening. But we are committed to ensuring that we are supporting the evolution of a program that best meets the needs of all students at both sites. And I would now like to turn it over to Connor from our planning department.
Hi, thank you. What you're looking at now is the Jack James High School enrollment projections and current enrollment, so 2021 through 2026. The blue bar is the enrollment and the projected enrollment, and the yellow line you see is the utilization. So enrollment at Jack James is projected to remain stable, as well as the enrollment at Louise Dean is expected to remain stable as well when it moves into the school. So as you can see, utilization and enrollment remain relatively stable at about 81% to 85% utilization, with enrollment being around 400 to 426. Now, the reason utilization is much higher on the chart than the enrollment is because of how utilization is calculated. Utilization is calculated using the weighted enrollment of the school. So that's different from the enrollment, straight enrollment, weighted enrollment, divided by the provincial capacity. So weighted enrollment is a calculation that weighs complex learners as using more space than a non-complex learner. So the provincial capacity is based on the amount of instructional space in the building. So that's why the utilization being at 85% is a bit higher than the enrollment. So on to the next slide, please. With the addition of Louise Dean into the Jack James High School building, we expect utilization increase to increase above 85% long-term, and will reach about 99% in that building with the addition of the Louise Dean program. Next slide, please. So what will happen to the future... What will happen to the facility that Louise Dean Center is currently located at, Kensington School? So the future use of the facility will be reviewed in alignment with the process outlined in the CBE's three-year capital plan, the three-year system student accommodation plan, and the 10-year system accommodation and facility strategy. In the past, CBE has closed buildings and reused facilities in a variety of ways. Some examples include disposal of the building, alternative programs put into the building, lease of the building, CBE administrative use, and temporary accommodation of students. So those have all been uses in the past when we have closed a program out of a school. Currently, CBE administration anticipates following through with the disposition of the property. Next slide, please. And off to you, Karen.
Great. Thanks, Connor. All right. So in terms of supporting the transition, because this move will need to go through the board closure process, this situation involves administration putting forward a recommendation to the board, and then the Board of Trustees will make the final decision about whether or not we go ahead with what is recommended. So when it comes to what is being recommended, i.e. moving the Louise Dean Center to Jack James High School, that is not something that administration is seeking feedback on right now. However, we are gathering input related to the implementation of this decision. That means asking about ways in which we can ensure a smooth transition for students, staff, and families in these moves. So that is what we're doing at this stage in the process. And I know this has been mentioned already, but just to confirm the decision-making process in a bit more detail, as I mentioned right now, we're gathering some input and perspectives. And then a recommendation will be presented to the Board of Trustees for consideration in September. If the board approves considering the recommendation, they will provide another opportunity for public input in September or October. And after hearing from the public, the Board of Trustees would then make a final decision in early November. So that timing would allow administration to then share an implementation plan by the end of November, which is informed by the perspectives and the input that we're gathering right now from those who are directly affected. So of course, as mentioned before, the timing would be September 2023, when students would begin attending school at the proposed location of Jack James High School, should this recommendation move forward. Okay, and now we would like to open it up to questions and discussion. And I'd just like to ask people to keep these couple of principles of participation in mind as we move through this portion of the meeting. So you can type your questions into the chat window, and we'll respond to them in the order asked. And in the interest of... Sorry, balancing airtime fairly, we may not respond to a question if it has already been answered earlier in the question and answer period. So just keep this in mind. And of course, it's always important that questions be asked in a respectful way, so we ask people to keep that in mind. And now I'll ask Adele if we have any questions in the queue.
Not seeing anything right now, Karen, so we'll give it a couple of minutes.
Okay, we'll pause for a moment and give people some time. Don't hesitate if you do have any questions. We have subject matter experts here to provide you with answers. So we'll just pause again to make sure people are taking a moment to reflect that that you have an opportunity. Okay, I see a comment.
Yeah, I think...
All right, go ahead, Adele.
I think somebody might be writing in a question here. Oh. "Hi, I'm here with three students from Louise Dean. We have a lot of questions and concerns." So if there's any specific questions, please feel free to add them in the chat, and we'll try to get them answered.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a question here. "What is your plan for the specialized programs currently at Jack James?" Oh, sorry, Mike. I saw your camera on there.
Yeah, thanks, sorry. And so really, there would be a continuation of those programs, that those shops are certainly in place, and there would be an expanded ability with the ability of that staff to come in and provide even more expertise around some of those courses. I can also turn it over to Ms. Gorkov, who could maybe provide a little bit more information on some of the specialized shops at the school.
Hi there. Just wondering for some clarification if you mean specialized programs or our shop programs? So if, just speaking on what Mr. Wilson was saying, we do offer some unique CTS and KNE shop programs that will be able to continue and offer an expand as Louise Dean students come in, and lots of accommodations to support students in their learning when they are at Jack James. If it is in relation to a specialized program that a student is in, that's a decision that's made by the board, and placement in those programs is not done through Jack James in the first place. We just welcome students in as they're placed in specialized programs.
Thanks, Ms... Thank you, Ms. Gorkov. If you just want to maybe clarify that question, we could answer it just a little bit better. Like I said, Ms. Gorkov had those great points.
And just assuming that it might be specialized programs, what I can share about that is where specialized programs are located within the schools across the system, that is determined on an annual basis. So what is looked at for those programs is where the students are located, if the school has the room and resources to host the program, and making sure we have the right program for the students within the geographic area. So that would be sort of an annual decision and one made outside of this process.
All right, we have another concern here from Barbara. She would like to ask why this meeting's being held from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., when most people would like to participate, but it's either their child's bedtime or just dinner. So just wondering if there's other... Someone could add anything about other opportunities to provide input, maybe?
My apologies, I was having trouble with my mic there. So we did schedule this. We did try to schedule this at a time when we felt that people may be available. We understand that not every time is convenient for everyone. We did also... We have had some conversations at both Jack James High School and the Louise Dean Center with staff, and we did have an opportunity to connect with some of the Louise Dean students as well in a conversation. And I believe there's also ongoing opportunities at the school that are being provided for people to share their thoughts and perspectives. So this... And we also have online surveys that are available for folks to share their perspectives that way. So we are trying to provide multiple opportunities. This is one of several opportunities that we're providing to hear people's thoughts and perspectives. So there are multiple ways to reach out, and certainly people are always welcome. So there are multiple ways to reach out, and certainly people are always welcome to reach out to the to the area for office as well. We've provided that as a contact point, as well as to the school principals who are who are involved in this recommendation. So hoping through those multiple opportunities that people are able to share their thoughts and perspectives. And we will also be sharing a recording of this session following, probably tomorrow, we'll have it posted on the website for folks. So if they weren't able to join, the information is available that way. And they they are always welcome to share their thoughts and perspectives with us through the surveys or through email and other opportunities.
Thanks, Karen. This next comment here is expressing a concern. Melding these two programs together would be detrimental, and we have safety concerns with our children attending a school that's in a community with many shootings in the area. It is also in a decentralized location, we have students all over the city.
I can jump in first if you'd like on that. Certainly, when we looked at the the area, it is a, the community itself in Forest Lawn High School is a very diverse community. And around the school, it's really a revitalized space. And the city of Calgary is doing a tremendous amount of work. There's supports around Alberta Health Services just down the street, the brand new city library, and so certainly it's an area that's very vibrant and one that is really starting to to come around, and certainly one that we were excited to welcome some new folks to. And so I don't know, Ms. Gorkov, if you want to add anything to that around the the actual feel in the school, which is certainly a very welcoming and safe and accommodating space.
Just, yeah, just to add on to what Mr. Wilson was saying, we work really hard to make sure that, or to ensure that our school community is a safe, caring, welcoming, learning environment, and we work really closely with our students, our families, and our school community around safety in our building and in the and in the community. And we understand that often, you know, we send our kids out into the world and and our students out into the world in hopes that they are safe when they're coming to and from school. And we do the best, we do the absolute best we can do, just as every high school does, every school in the CBE. We do, you know, it's, it's, we understand that Forest Lawn area does have some reputations. And we work really hard to to kind of fight that reputation in our schools because we know that we do amazing work in our buildings. And although we can't control the actions and behaviors of some people outside of our school community inside our schools, it's, it is as safe as we can make it at each and every day.
This next comment here just says PLP and RISE, and I believe that's just a follow-up from a clarifying a previous comment. So I will move on to the next one. We have concerns over who would be watching our children. The principal of Jack James came to Louise Dean and said that there would be other high school students watching our children, which is a safety concern and ethical issues.
Thank you for raising that important part, or important point. So what we have accounted for in this transition is that there would be staff, like you currently have, overseeing the students within the childcare facilities, but at Jack James High School. And so it is not Jack James students that would be overseeing the care of the students, of the of the children of the Louise Dean Center students. Indeed, there is currently a preschool at Jack James High School. However, move with the movement of the Louise Dean Center students over to Jack James High School, there would be the same setup that you currently have in terms of, I believe it is the Kindred, Kindred folks that help support in looking after the the babies and the toddlers of the Louise Dean Center students. Andrea, do you have something to add there?
Yeah, it actually is about the previous question, so thank you, Lisa, for managing that one. Just regarding the location, so part of when we are looking at where we can relocate programs or schools, point of access is really critical in determining where most of the students geographically located within the city, and where can we situate it so that this is actually something that is advantageous to them. So what we know about most of the students that are attending Louise Dean, they actually are in closer proximity to Jack James High School. So that, along with the fact that this is, has a good line of transit for anyone who is coming in that domain, it actually would remove a barrier of transportation that that we know is is there for some of the students that are attempting to come to Louise Dean, but are challenged by the distance that it serves. So I just thought it was really important to acknowledge that not only as Mike and Principal Jennifer were able to speak to the safety and the welcoming and caring space that Jack James does offer. In addition to that, it is, it does provide better access geographically for the students of Louise Dean.
Thanks, Andrea. On this next comment here, I think it's a follow-up to the safety comment, just that they didn't ask about the area's vibrancy that they asked about the safety.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to follow up with that. I think, you know, one of the things that we try to battle is that stigmatizing certain areas. Certainly, based out of the Forest Lawn community, I can speak to the the welcoming and the the safety and the caring that the community residents have around here, embracing diversity. Certainly, I think that's something that's, it's easy to stereotype certain areas or certain places, and it's just not true, it's just not so. Okay, and again, we live in a big city, but but I don't want this to be about that this is not a safe community. It is a wonderful, safe, caring community.
Thanks, Mike. The next one here is, we have concerns over the social climate within Jack James/Louise Dean and encouraging teen pregnancy to already at-risk youth.
Thank you for that concern and comment. As we approach this, we would certainly be looking to ensure that that transition for all students, both within Louise Dean Center and for Jack James High School students, is of the utmost importance. And so when we're thinking about encouraging teen pregnancy to already at at-risk youth, there's already, there's conversations, I'm sure that will happen at both the Jack James High School site as well as within the, within the teachings of the Louise Deans, for the Louise Dean Center students. And this was actually brought up at our student engagement, and something that was noted by one of the teachers in the engagement was what a wonderful leadership opportunity for our Louise Dean Center students too. And Andrea, would you like to add to that?
Yes, thank you, Lisa. So I think it's really critical to think about the services that are provided to our Louise Dean Center students. And part of that is for the partnership we have with Kindred and Alberta Health Services. And I think within that, that there has been quite a bit of service as provided to these students that are in the way of counseling and helping them with a feeling of acceptance. And we certainly would want that to continue over into Jack James. But in addition to that, we also recognize that there's some services that could be provided to the Jack James students as well. So rather than looking at encouraging teen pregnancy, I think you would actually be able to provide mental health support to more students. But I'll turn it over to one of the CEOs, Jessica Cope-Williams, who can talk a little bit more about that.
Thanks, Andrea. Yes, I think one of the opportunities that we see with moving into this sheltered programming structure is the opportunity for our services to be accessed potentially more broadly. And so I think what's what's exciting there is that actually can potentially even become a prevention strategy for teen pregnancy, as we're able to get our services available to students where they need them most. Right now, for this particular service, you have to be pregnant or parenting to access them. And this, similar to what Andrea was saying earlier about location, actually helps to reduce some of the barriers to accessing our services. Teen pregnancy is actually trending down, and I think that's a important sort of population health trend to keep in mind as well.
The next question here is asking, can you provide more details as to the disposition process for the school? Dani?
Yes, I'm the superintendent of facilities, and so I'll talk about this disposition process. So the first step, should the relocation be approved by the Board of Trustees, will be to go back to the Board of Trustees and ask for them to declare the property surplus to our needs. If the Board of Trustees approves, then at that point in time, a request is submitted to Alberta Education, to the Minister, under the disposition of property regulations with that same request, requesting permission to dispose of the property as, because of the fact that it's surplus to our needs. Again, if then it is approved, then it falls back to us to take the next steps. And the next step falls under the joint use agreement and that we have with the city and the Calgary Catholic School District. And what that means is that there is a right of first refusal that is provided to the city under that agreement. If they wish to purchase the property, they can do so. If they choose to decline, then at that point in time, we'd be going out to the market to place the the property for sale. Now, of course, at any point in time, like I indicated, that could be stopped. We could be told by the Board of Trustees, we could be directed to to use that facility for other purposes. The minister could choose to direct a different use for that property as well. And and then, you know, certainly subsequently, when we do ultimately bring something to the market, it can take sometimes quite an extensive period of time for a property to actually be sold. So that's the answer to that question.
Thank you. The next concern here is we have concerns over higher-level courses only being available at Forest Lawn High School across the field, while students would have to leave their children at the other school in the care of other students.
Thanks, Adele. No, so that 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 is very much not the plan. So the current experience as it as it stands at the Louise Dean Center, namely the courses are available at that site, would continue at the Jack James site. Where appropriate, we could explore opportunities at CV Learn and other such virtual sites. But at this point, the the plan is very much that the students would stay at Jack James to take those courses, including Dash One and Dash Two.
Okay, we have another question here. The other opportunity that is being mentioned at Louise Dean was in an environment where the students were approached, not the parents of students or people who feel like they're going to be hurt. The answer to most of the questions were very open-ended and referred us to the questionnaire that was honestly very poorly written. So I think this is a question around the engagement process here and the session at Louise Dean.
If I could, Adele, I believe it's a comment personally that is being shared with us. And so it's something that we can certainly note in terms of how we approach students and and sought initial input on this recommendation. So thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Dani. And we have another couple here, here, I'll just make note of, about the platform. And I believe someone is going to respond to those in the comments. So I will move on to the next one. Most of our students that are geographically closer to Jack James do not want to attend, and that is why they attend Louise Dean in the first place. So that's a comment. Some of our students were even turned away from Jack James. Sorry, these are some comments here, when they fell pregnant, and now they will be expected to go back. I'm not sure if somebody wants to speak to that.
Maybe from a transportation perspective, I could, I could share that accessing Louise Dean, based on my understanding, was actually quite a challenge for students. And and again, we believe that the placement of the program where we're proposing at Jack James will greatly facilitate students' ability to be able to to get there in a in an easier fashion. Now, I recognize that there may be concerns if if there's a student who felt that for some reason they were turned away from a site. And maybe Andrea, you've got some more comments on that front, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so while we can't really speak to, you know, individual circumstances, I think what's really important is that when we move through this process, that if they were to transition over to Jack James, we want to make sure that there's significant transition plan for each and every student at Louise Dean. And through that, we'd make sure that there's a discussion about what type of learning, what type of supports, and so on. In addition to that, we know that there'd be continual uptake of new students that would be coming into the Louise Dean Center program. So we would make sure that with our process, the students would be able to come in and be registered. So again, not sure what barrier might have existed in that particular circumstance, but generally, this program is for pregnant and parenting teens. So we would make sure that we do prioritize their entrance into the program. And then again, those that are already in there really take a careful look at how to transition them and their needs to make sure they are met at the new site.
So I see there's a couple more comments here, but I I won't read them out, but they are being captured, and I'll move on to the next question. Isn't it a prejudice to relocate teen moms to a school that is a lower academic school, mostly KNE? What diplomas does Jack James offer as classes?
Yeah, and I could look to to also get Ms. Gorkov to jump in if she can. But the, right now, Jack James High School offers both a diploma and KNE. Now, some of the Dash One courses aren't available at this time at Jack James, but certainly as we look to move the relocation process forward, that would become available for those students. And again, that expanded opportunity for both LVC students as well as for Jack James students. I don't know, Andrea, do you want to add anything more to that?
Yeah, I think just to reinforce it once again, it's really important to keep in mind that the core programming that's available at Louise Dean Center would continue. So it's not about pulling those supports away. So just as now, students are able to take Dash One courses through Louise Dean, those supports to be able to teach those courses would continue over into the new site. So it's not meant to be moving them to a site where there's fewer opportunities. It's actually meant to provide greater opportunities by keeping the ones that are already part of the program, which could include Dash One or Dash Two courses, depending on what each student needs. But then also looking at what other opportunities are available for the Louise Dean students at Jack James, and also looking to see how else we can support Jack James students as well.
This next question here is from Lucy, and I think it's around safety. My daughter is a student at Louise Dean, and it, as is my granddaughter. Before my daughter got pregnant, she studied at a good, small public school, and she was assaulted by another student literally in front of the office. Prior to that, we had had many conversations with the school counselor about that being a rising concern. How do we prevent that from happening to pregnant girls or girls with kids around?
So I think, you know, again, not sure about this particular situation. However, I think it's really important just to acknowledge that we would want to make sure that our students are safe, all of our students, but certainly those that are part of the Louise Dean Center program. We know you have very specific needs that require additional care and additional support. So setting up that program will take the careful consideration that it would have in any, any certain situation. Certainly, to the same extent that safety is prioritized at Louise Dean Center now, we would be holding that same regard for safety for all of the students at Jack James. And that's also just putting it into the context that Jack James is currently a very safe school that is really well managed and supported by all of the students. that is really well managed and supported by all of the staff there. But putting Louise Dean within that site will make sure that there's extra support and care for those students. And again, looking towards those transition processes to make sure it's personally a good situation for each and everyone.
Yeah, and if I could just jump in, Andrea, as well, too. I think the real strength of Jack James High School is that small school appeal, where they really get to know the students there. And as Andrea said, as they transition students, very, very purposeful, very, very individualized programming. And but that ability to be really known in the school is something that's really powerful, and you can really, it really is telling for those students. And so certainly when we think of sites or possible sites, Jack James is probably the best at at creating that really highly personalized experience in a small, safe, caring school community.
Thank you, Mike and Andrea. The next question is what construction redevelopment is proposed to happen at Jack James? That sounds like current programs will be canceled to make space. When will construction happen?
Great. So in terms of construction, and in fact, even going one step further and doing design and specifications for that work, we really have to wait till there's a decision. And we can't presuppose the outcome. The Board of Trustees is completely independent in their review of this issue. And so there's, we have to be very careful not to expend time, effort, and money on any sort of changes to the building in anticipation of something that may not be accepted. As in regards to the type of redevelopment, we are really focused here on ensuring that school within a school kind of principle or or model is adhered to. So we're talking about the relocation of the Louise Dean Center as a school within a building that happens to house another school. And and so the kind of redevelopment that's going to be required is is essentially to make sure that we have the the required spaces for students, so classrooms that are dedicated to 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 the the program, space for administration to be able to to manage the program. That is the kind of activity. There is no intent to cancel space that would adversely impact the programming opportunities within Jack James High School. And I think with that, maybe I'll hand it over to Andrea just to 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 convey a few more comments. And in this case, I think it's specifically to some of the questions that I'm seeing also in in terms of dropout rates. And so maybe if you can speak to that, please.
Yeah, sure. So I think there was, there were some questions there, you know, sort of in line with the questions about with their the ability to take drop dash one courses. Is there a concern about the dropout rate of students either at Jack James or Louise Dean, or if they moved across? And and what I will say is just, you know, really reinforcing that there's an expectation here that we would continue the supports that are already present at Louise Dean and make sure that they're brought along. So all of these supports that are given to students academically, as well as the the different health and social supports and mental health supports that they need, those will continue on. So we wouldn't expect there to be a change in high school completion for Louise Dean students. If anything, there would be a new suite of opportunities, of courses, that they may be able to engage in at Jack James. So I think in that regard, if anything, we'd be able to bolster their achievement and help them with finding different ways to approach programming that will decrease their dropout rates. And of course, at Jack James High School, again, as as our director Mike pointed out, it's it is a smaller high school, which really means that each one of those students are really known to administration and to the teachers. And so with that complement and all of the different supports that are sort of brought already by Jack James, as well as Louise Dean staff coming on board, you really would be able to bolster all of the academic and other supports needed to really make sure that these students do complete high school and are equipped for their next steps.
Thank you. I think we have time for one more question here. So this one is around safety. How will you address safety? Specifics, please.
So I can start to answer that, and I'm happy to have other colleagues jump in around that question. So I think what is really, really important, and again, we taught, we've talked about that personalized transition plan for every student. And so it will be important that as Louise Dean Center relocates to Jack James High School, that that transition plan is also made aware to the staff within Jack James High School so that all of the students are known. Also, those supports and services from will still be able to be accessed by the Louise Dean Center students and also be made available to Jack James High School students. Those, the supports and services there also add to the safety and well-being of the students. As with any school that we work in, there is a progressive discipline policy that I know that both Helen and Jen, Jennifer Gorkov at Jack James High School adhere to. And so through that, they would work around understanding who their students are as well as supporting them through that progressive discipline policy. Does anybody else have anything to add to that? Adele?
Thank you. So seeing that we only have a few minutes left, I will pass it over to Dani for closing.
That little delay while I was finding my buttons here. So let me start by thanking you for your time and and the input you've provided today. You've you've shown us commitment, that the commitment that you have towards the Louise Dean Program just by being here tonight, and you know, as a reflection of some of the comments that we heard earlier, saying that it was a challenging time for you. So I I very much appreciate that you were able to make that happen nonetheless. Very interested in the insight that you provided in terms of what the factors are that would, I think, influence this this proposal the most in terms of how it could best support students at both Louise Dean Center as well as Jack James High School. I'd like to also reemphasize that it's important for us to provide as smooth as possible transition, again, should this trend, this recommendation be approved. And that's why we're taking the time that we are taking tonight to share information with you, answer questions, and also hear your thoughts and perspective. And not just in this forum, but also in various other opportunities that are available, including the online survey that's open from May 13 through to May 29. And that's available via our our website, or that to the results of which will be available on our website towards the end of June. And then ultimately, with an update being sent out to families in September. So thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for participating, for your your honest and and very thoughtful comments, and I hope you can enjoy a little bit of the remaining evening tonight. Good night.